Good morning, once again, everybody. It is now ten fifteen.
We're gonna start by putting those two members on the floor. Thank you very much. We need to have ten members for our forum. Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Panche, Mr. Perry, Mr. Reyes. They're all in the office. So, President, we need to have them here. Mr. Perez, Mr. Banj, Mr. Kowski, Mr. Raita, Mr. Sain. We need to have ten members for our forum. Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Panche, Mr. Perry, Mr. Reyes. They're all in the office. So, President, we need to have them here. Mr. Perez, Mr. Banj, Mr. Kowski, Mr. Raita, Mr. Sain. We need to have ten members for our forum. Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Panche, Mr. Perry, Mr. Reyes. They're all in the office. So, President, we need to have them here. Mr. Perez, Mr. Banj, Mr. Kowski, Mr. Raita, Mr. Sain. We need to have ten members for our forum. Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Panche, Mr. Perry, Mr. Reyes. They're all in the office. So, President, we need to have them here. Mr. Perez, Mr. Banj, Mr. Kowski, Mr. Raita, Mr. Sain. We need to have ten members for our forum. Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Panche, Mr. Perry, Mr. Reyes. They're all in the office. So, President, we need to have them here. Mr. Perez, Mr. Banj, Mr. Kowski, Mr. Raita, Mr. Sain. We need to have ten members for our forum. Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Panche, Mr. Perry, Mr. Reyes. They're all in the office. So, President, we need to have them here. Mr. Perez, Mr. Banj, Mr. Kowski, Mr. Raita, Mr. Sain. We need to have ten members for our forum. Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Panche, Mr. Perry, Mr. Reyes. They're all in the office. So, President, we need to have them here. Mr. Perez, Mr. Banj, Mr. Kowski, Mr. Raita, Mr. Sain. We need to have ten members for our forum. Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Panche, Mr. Perry, Mr. Reyes. They're all in the office. So, President, we need to have them here. Mr. Perez, Mr. Banj, Mr. Kowski, Mr. Raita, Mr. Sain. We need to have ten members for our forum. Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Panche, Mr. Perry, Mr. Reyes. They're all in the office. So, President, we need to have them here. Mr. Perez, Mr. Banj, Mr. Kowski, Mr. Raita, Mr. Sain. We need to have ten members for our forum. Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Panche, Mr. Perry, Mr. Reyes. They're all in the office. So, President, we need to have them here. Mr. Perez, Mr. Banj, Mr. Kowski, Mr. Raita, Mr. Sain. We need to have ten members for our forum. Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Panche, Mr. Perry, Mr. Reyes. They're all in the office. So, President, we need to have them here. Mr. Perez, Mr. Banj, Mr. Kowski, Mr. Raita, Mr. Sain. We need to have ten members for our forum. Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Panche, Mr. Perry, Mr. Reyes. They're all in the office. So, President, we need to have them here. Mr. Perez, Mr. Banj, Mr. Kowski, Mr. Raita, Mr. Sain. We need to have ten members for our forum. Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Panche, Mr. Perry, Mr. Reyes. They're all in the office. So, President, we need to have them here. Mr. Perez, Mr. Banj, Mr. Kowski, Mr. Raita, Mr. Sain. We need to have ten members for our forum. Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Panche, Mr. Perry, Mr. Reyes. They're all in the office. So, President, we need to have them here. Mr. Perez, Mr. Banj, Mr. Kowski, Mr. Raita, Mr. Sain. We need to have ten members for our forum. Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Panche, Mr. Perry, Mr. Reyes. They're all in the office. So, President, we need to have them here. Mr. Perez, Mr. Banj, Mr. Kowski, Mr. Raita, Mr. Sain. We need to have ten members for our forum. Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Panche, Mr. Perry, Mr. Reyes. They're all in the office. So, President, we need to have them here. Mr. Perez, Mr. Banj, Mr. Kowski, Mr. Raita, Mr. Sain. We need to have ten members for our forum. Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Panche, Mr. Perry, Mr. Reyes. They're all in the office. So, President, we need to have them here. Mr. Perez, Mr. Banj, Mr. Kowski, Mr. Raita, Mr. Sain. We need to have ten members for our forum. Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Panche, Mr. Perry, Mr. Reyes. They're all in the office. So, President, we need to have them here. Mr. Perez, Mr. Banj, Mr. Kowski, Mr. Raita, Mr. Sain. We need to have ten members for our forum. Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Panche, Mr. Perry, Mr. Reyes. They're all in the office. So, President, we need to have them here. Mr. Perez, Mr. Banj, Mr. Kowski, Mr. Raita, Mr. Sain. We need to have ten members for our forum. Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Panche, Mr. Perry, Mr. Reyes. They're all in the office. So, President, we need to have them here. Mr. Perez, Mr. Banj, Mr. Kowski, Mr. Raita, Mr. Sain. We need to have ten members for our forum. Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Panche, Mr. Perry, Mr. Reyes. They're all in the office. So, President, we need to have them here. Mr. Perez, Mr. Banj, Mr. Kowski, Mr. Raita, Mr. Sain. We need to have ten members for our forum. Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Panche, Mr. Perry, Mr. Reyes. They're all in the office. So, President, we need to have them here. Mr. Perez, Mr. Banj, Mr. Kowski, Mr. Raita, Mr. Sain. We need to have ten members for our forum. Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Panche, Mr. Perry, Mr. Reyes. They're all in the office. So, President, we need to have them here. Mr. Perez, Mr. Banj, Mr. Kowski, Mr. Raita, Mr. Sain. We need to have ten members for our forum. Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Panche, Mr. Perry, Mr. Reyes. They're all in the office. So, President, we need to have them here. Mr. Perez, Mr. Banj, Mr. Kowski, Mr. Raita, Mr. Sain. We need to have ten members for our forum. Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Panche, Mr. Perry, Mr. Reyes. They're all in the office. So, President, we need to have them here. Mr. Perez, Mr. Banj, Mr. Kowski, Mr. Raita, Mr. Sain. We need to have ten members for our forum. Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Panche, Mr. Perry, Mr. Reyes. They're all in the office. So, President, we need to have them here. Mr. Perez, Mr. Banj, Mr. Kowski, Mr. Raita, Mr. Sain. We need to have ten members for our forum. Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Panche, Mr. Perry, Mr. Reyes. They're all in the office. So, President, we need to have them here. Mr. Perez, Mr. Banj, Mr. Kowski, Mr. Raita, Mr. Sain. We need to have ten members for our forum. Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Panche, Mr. Perry, Mr. Reyes. They're all in the office. So, President, we need to have them here. Mr. Perez, Mr. Banj, Mr. Kowski, Mr. Raita, Mr. Sain. We need to have ten members for our forum. Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Panche, Mr. Perry, Mr. Reyes. They're all in the office. So, President, we need to have them here. Mr. Perez, Mr. Banj, Mr. Kowski, Mr. Raita, Mr. Sain. We need to have ten members for our forum. Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Panche, Mr. Perry, Mr. Reyes. They're all in the office. So, President, we need to have them here. Mr. Perez, Mr. Banj, Mr. Kowski, Mr. Raita, Mr. Sain. We need to have ten members for our forum. Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Panche, Mr. Perry, Mr. Reyes. They're all in the office. So, President, we need to have them here. Mr. Perez, Mr. Banj, Mr. Kowski, Mr. Raita, Mr. Sain. We need to have ten members for our forum. Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Panche, Mr. Perry, Mr. Reyes. They're all in the office. So, President, we need to have them here. Mr. Perez, Mr. Banj, Mr. Kowski, Mr. Raita, Mr. Sain. We need to have ten members for our forum. Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Panche, Mr. Perry, Mr. Reyes. They're all in the office. So, President, we need to have them here. Mr. Perez, Mr. Banj, Mr. Kowski, Mr. Raita, Mr. Sain. We need to have ten members for our forum. Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Panche, Mr. Perry, Mr. Reyes. They're all in the office. So, President, we need to have them here. Mr. Perez, Mr. Banj, Mr. Kowski, Mr. Raita, Mr. Sain. We need to have ten members for our forum. Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Panche, Mr. Perry, Mr. Reyes. They're all in the office. So, President, we need to have them here. Mr. Perez, Mr. Banj, Mr. Kowski, Mr. Raita, Mr. Sain. We need to have ten members for our forum. Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Panche, Mr. Perry, Mr. Reyes. They're all in the office. So, President, we need to have them here. Mr. Perez, Mr. Banj, Mr. Kowski, Mr. Raita, Mr. Sain. We need to have ten members for our forum. Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Panche, Mr. Perry, Mr. Reyes. They're all in the office. So, President, we need to have them here. Mr. Perez, Mr. Banj, Mr. Kowski, Mr. Raita, Mr. Sain. We need to have ten members for our forum. Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Panche, Mr. Perry, Mr. Reyes. They're all in the office. So, President, we need to have them here. Mr. Perez, Mr. Banj, Mr. Kowski, Mr. Raita, Mr. Sain. We need to have ten members for our forum. Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Panche, Mr. Perry, Mr. Reyes. They're all in the office. So, President, we need to have them here. Mr. Perez, Mr. Banj, Mr. Kowski, Mr. Raita, Mr. Sain. We need to have ten members for our forum. Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Panche, Mr. Perry, Mr. Reyes. They're all in the office. So, President, we need to have them here. Mr. Perez, Mr. Banj, Mr. Kowski, Mr. Raita, Mr. Sain. We need to have ten members for our forum. Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Panche, Mr. Perry, Mr. Reyes. They're all in the office. So, President, we need to have them here. Mr. Perez, Mr. Banj, Mr. Kowski, Mr. Raita, Mr. Sain. We need to have ten members for our forum. Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Panche, Mr. Perry, Mr. Reyes. They're all in the office. So, President, we need to have them here. Mr. Perez, Mr. Banj, Mr. Kowski, Mr. Raita, Mr. Sain. We need to have ten members for our forum. Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Panche, Mr. Perry, Mr. Reyes. They're all in the office. So, President, we need to have them here. Mr. Perez, Mr. Banj, Mr. Kowski, Mr. Raita, Mr. Sain. We need to have ten members for our forum. Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Panche, Mr. Perry, Mr. Reyes. They're all in the office. So, President, we need to have them here. Mr. Perez, Mr. Banj, Mr. Kowski, Mr. Raita, Mr. Sain. We need to have ten members for our forum. Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Panche, Mr. Perry, Mr. Reyes. They're all in the office. So, President, we need to have them here. Mr. Perez, Mr. Banj, Mr. Kowski, Mr. Raita, Mr. Sain. We need to have ten members for our forum. Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Panche, Mr. Perry, Mr. Reyes. They're all in the office. So, President, we need to have them here. Mr. Perez, Mr. Banj, Mr. Kowski, Mr. Raita, Mr. Sain. We need to have ten members for our forum. Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Panche, Mr. Perry, Mr. Reyes. They're all in the office. So, President, we need to have them here. Mr. Perez, Mr. Banj, Mr. Kowski, Mr. Raita, Mr. Sain. We need to have ten members for our forum. Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Panche, Mr. Perry, Mr. Reyes. They're all in the office. So, President, we need to have them here. Mr. Perez, Mr. Banj, Mr. Kowski, Mr. Raita, Mr. Sain. We need to have ten members for our forum. Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Panche, Mr. Perry, Mr. Reyes. They're all in the office. So, President, we need to have them here. Mr. Perez, Mr. Banj, Mr. Kowski, Mr. Raita, Mr. Sain. We need to have ten members for our forum. Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Panche, Mr. Perry, Mr. Reyes. They're all in the office. So, President, we need to have them here. Mr. Perez, Mr. Banj, Mr. Kowski, Mr. Raita, Mr. Sain. We need to have ten members for our forum. Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Panche, Mr. Perry, Mr. Reyes. They're all in the office. So, President, we need to have them here. Mr. Perez, Mr. Banj, Mr. Kowski, Mr. Raita, Mr. Sain. We need to have ten members for our forum. Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Panche, Mr. Perry, Mr. Reyes. They're all in the office. So, President, we need to have them here. Mr. Perez, Mr. Banj, Mr. Kowski, Mr. Raita, Mr. Sain. We need to have ten members for our forum. Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Panche, Mr. Perry, Mr. Reyes. They're all in the office. So, President, we need to have them here. Mr. Perez, Mr. Banj, Mr. Kowski, Mr. Raita, Mr. Sain. We need to have ten members for our forum. Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Panche, Mr. Perry, Mr. Reyes. They're all in the office. So, President, we need to have them here. Mr. Perez, Mr. Banj, Mr. Kowski, Mr. Raita, Mr. Sain. We need to have ten members for our forum. Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Panche, Mr. Perry, Mr. Reyes. They're all in the office. So, President, we need to have them here. Mr. Perez, Mr. Banj, Mr. Kowski, Mr. Raita, Mr. Sain. We need to have ten members for our forum. Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Panche, Mr. Perry, Mr. Reyes. They're all in the office. So, President, we need to have them here. Mr. Perez, Mr. Banj, Mr. Kowski, Mr. Raita, Mr. Sain. We need to have ten members for our forum. Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Panche, Mr. Perry, Mr. Reyes. They're all in the office. So, President, we need to have them here. Mr. Perez, Mr. Banj, Mr. Kowski, Mr. Raita, Mr. Sain. We need to have ten members for our forum. Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Panche, Mr. Perry, Mr. Reyes. They're all in the office. So, President, we need to have them here. Mr. Perez, Mr. Banj, Mr. Kowski, Mr. Raita, Mr. Sain. We need to have ten members for our forum. Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Panche, Mr. Perry, Mr. Reyes. They're all in the office. So, President, we need to have them here. Mr. Perez, Mr. Banj, Mr. Kowski, Mr. Raita, Mr. Sain. We need to have ten members for our forum. Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Panche, Mr. Perry, Mr. Reyes. They're all in the office. So, President, we need to have them here. Mr. Perez, Mr. Banj, Mr. Kowski, Mr. Raita, Mr. Sain. We need to have ten members for our forum. Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Panche, Mr. Perry, Mr. Reyes. They're all in the office. So, President, we need to have them here. Mr. Perez, Mr. Banj, Mr. Kowski, Mr. Raita, Mr. Sain. We need to have ten members for our forum. Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Panche, Mr. Perry, Mr. Reyes. They're all in the office. So, President, we need to have them here. Mr. Perez, Mr. Banj, Mr. Kowski, Mr. Raita, Mr. Sain. We need to have ten members for our forum. Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Panche, Mr. Perry, Mr. Reyes. They're all in the office. So, President, we need to have them here. Mr. Perez, Mr. Banj, Mr. Kowski, Mr. Raita, Mr. Sain. We need to have ten members for our forum. Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Panche, Mr. Perry, Mr. Reyes. They're all in the office. So, President, we need to have them here. Mr. Perez, Mr. Banj, Mr. Kowski, Mr. Raita, Mr. Sain. We need to have ten members for our forum. Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Panche, Mr. Perry, Mr. Reyes. They're all in the office. So, President, we need to have them here. Mr. Perez, Mr. Banj, Mr. Kowski, Mr. Raita, Mr. Sain. We need to have ten members for our forum. Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Panche, Mr. Perry, Mr. Reyes. They're all in the office. So, President, we need to have them here. Mr. Perez, Mr. Banj, Mr. Kowski, Mr. Raita, Mr. Sain. We need to have ten members for our forum. Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Panche, Mr. Perry, Mr. Reyes. They're all in the office. So, President, we need to have them here. Mr. Perez, Mr. Banj, Mr. Kowski, Mr. Raita, Mr. Sain. We need to have ten members for our forum. Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Panche, Mr. Perry, Mr. Reyes. They're all in the office. So, President, we need to have them here. Mr. Perez, Mr. Banj, Mr. Kowski, Mr. Raita, Mr. Sain. We need to have ten members for our forum. Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Panche, Mr. Perry, Mr. Reyes. They're all in the office. So, President, we need to have them here. Mr. Perez, Mr. Banj, Mr. Kowski, Mr. Raita, Mr. Sain. We need to have ten members for our forum. Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Panche, Mr. Perry, Mr. Reyes. They're all in the office. So, President, we need to have them here. Mr. Perez, Mr. Banj, Mr. Kowski, Mr. Raita, Mr. Sain. We need to have ten members for our forum. Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Panche, Mr. Perry, Mr. Reyes. They're all in the office. So, President, we need to have them here. Mr. Perez, Mr. Banj, Mr. Kowski, Mr. Raita, Mr. Sain. We need to have ten members for our forum. Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Panche, Mr. Perry, Mr. Reyes. They're all in the office. So, President, we need to have them here. Mr. Perez, Mr. Banj, Mr. Kowski, Mr. Raita, Mr. Sain. We need to have ten members for our forum. Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Panche, Mr. Perry, Mr. Reyes. They're all in the office. So, President, we need to have them here. Mr. Perez, Mr. Banj, Mr. Kowski, Mr. Raita, Mr. Sain. We need to have ten members for our forum. Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Panche, Mr. Perry, Mr. Reyes. They're all in the office. So, President, we need to have them here. Mr. Perez, Mr. Banj, Mr. Kowski, Mr. Raita, Mr. Sain. We need to have ten members for our forum. Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Panche, Mr. Perry, Mr. Reyes. They're all in the office. So, President, we need to have them here. Mr. Perez, Mr. Banj, Mr. Kowski, Mr. Raita, Mr. Sain. We need to have ten members for our forum. Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Panche, Mr. Perry, Mr. Reyes. They're all in the office. So, President, we need to have them here. Mr. Perez, Mr. Banj, Mr. Kowski, Mr. Raita, Mr. Sain. We need to have ten members for our forum. Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Panche, Mr. Perry, Mr. Reyes. They're all in the office. So, President, we need to have them here. Mr. Perez, Mr. Banj, Mr. Kowski, Mr. Raita, Mr. Sain. We need to have ten members for our forum. Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Panche, Mr. Perry, Mr. Reyes. They're all in the office. So, President, we need to have them here. Mr. Perez, Mr. Banj, Mr. Kowski, Mr. Raita, Mr. Sain. We need to have ten members for our forum. Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Panche, Mr. Perry, Mr. Reyes. They're all in the office. So, President, we need to have them here. Mr. Perez, Mr. Banj, Mr. Kowski, Mr. Raita, Mr. Sain. We need to have ten members for our forum. Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Panche, Mr. Perry, Mr. Reyes. They're all in the office. So, President, we need to have them here. Mr. Perez, Mr. Banj, Mr. Kowski, Mr. Raita, Mr. Sain. We need to have ten members for our forum. Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Panche, Mr. Perry, Mr. Reyes. They're all in the office. So, President, we need to have them here. Mr. Perez, Mr. Banj, Mr. Kowski, Mr. Raita, Mr. Sain. We need to have ten members for our forum. Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Panche, Mr. Perry, Mr. Reyes. They're all in the office. So, President, we need to have them here. Mr. Perez, Mr. Banj, Mr. Kowski, Mr. Raita, Mr. Sain. We need to have ten members for our forum. Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Panche, Mr. Perry, Mr. Reyes. They're all in the office. So, President, we need to have them here. Mr. Perez, Mr. Banj, Mr. Kowski, Mr. Raita, Mr. Sain. We need to have ten members for our forum. Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Panche, Mr. Perry, Mr. Reyes. They're all in the office. So, President, we need to have them here. Mr. Perez, Mr. Banj, Mr. Kowski, Mr. Raita, Mr. Sain. We need to have ten members for our forum. Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Panche, Mr. Perry, Mr. Reyes. They're all in the office. So, President, we need to have them here. Mr. Perez, Mr. Banj, Mr. Kowski, Mr. Raita, Mr. Sain. We need to have ten members for our forum. Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Panche, Mr. Perry, Mr. Reyes. They're all in the office. So, President, we need to have them here. Mr. Perez, Mr. Banj, Mr. Kowski, Mr. Raita, Mr. Sain. We need to have ten members for our forum. Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Panche, Mr. Perry, Mr. Reyes. They're all in the office. So, President, we need to have them here. Mr. Perez, Mr. Banj, Mr. Kowski, Mr. Raita, Mr. Sain. We need to have ten members for our forum. Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Panche, Mr. Perry, Mr. Reyes. They're all in the office. So, President, we need to have them here. Mr. Perez, Mr. Banj, Mr. Kowski, Mr. Raita, Mr. Sain. We need to have ten members for our forum. Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Panche, Mr. Perry, Mr. Reyes. They're all in the office. So, President, we need to have them here. Mr. Perez, Mr. Banj, Mr. Kowski, Mr. Raita, Mr. Sain. We need to have ten members for our forum. Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Panche, Mr. Perry, Mr. Reyes. They're all in the office. So, President, we need to have them here. Mr. Perez, Mr. Banj, Mr. Kowski, Mr. Raita, Mr. Sain. We need to have ten members for our forum. Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Panche, Mr. Perry, Mr. Reyes. They're all in the office. So, President, we need to have them here. Mr. Perez, Mr. Banj, Mr. Kowski, Mr. Raita, Mr. Sain. We need to have ten members for our forum. Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Panche, Mr. Perry, Mr. Reyes. They're all in the office. So, President, we need to have them here. Mr. Perez, Mr. Banj, Mr. Kowski, Mr. Raita, Mr. Sain. We need to have ten members for our forum. Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Panche, Mr. Perry, Mr. Reyes. They're all in the office. So, President, we need to have them here. Mr. Perez, Mr. Banj, Mr. Kowski, Mr. Raita, Mr. Sain. We need to have ten members for our forum. Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Panche, Mr. Perry, Mr. Reyes. They're all in the office. So, President, we need to have them here. Mr. Perez, Mr. Banj, Mr. Kowski, Mr. Raita, Mr. Sain. We need to have ten members for our forum. Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Panche, Mr. Perry, Mr. Reyes. They're all in the office. So, President, we need to have them here. Mr. Perez, Mr. Banj, Mr. Kowski, Mr. Raita, Mr. Sain. We need to have ten members for our forum. Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Panche, Mr. Perry, Mr. Reyes. They're all in the office. So, President, we need to have them here. Mr. Perez, Mr. Banj, Mr. Kowski, Mr. Raita, Mr. Sain. We need to have ten members for our forum. Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Panche, Mr. Perry, Mr. Reyes. They're all in the office. So, President, we need to have them here. Mr. Perez, Mr. Banj, Mr. Kowski, Mr. Raita, Mr. Sain. We need to have ten members for our forum. Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Panche, Mr. Perry, Mr. Reyes. They're all in the office. So, President, we need to have them here. Mr. Perez, Mr. Banj, Mr. Kowski, Mr. Raita, Mr. Sain. We need to have ten members for our forum. Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Panche, Mr. Perry, Mr. Reyes. They're all in the office. So, President, we need to have them here. Mr. Perez, Mr. Banj, Mr. Kowski, Mr. Raita, Mr. Sain. We need to have ten members for our forum. Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Panche, Mr. Perry, Mr. Reyes. They're all in the office. So, President, we need to have them here. Mr. Perez, Mr. Banj, Mr. Kowski, Mr. Raita, Mr. Sain. We need to have ten members for our forum. Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Panche, Mr. Perry, Mr. Reyes. They're all in the office. So, President, we need to have them here. Mr. Perez, Mr. Banj, Mr. Kowski, Mr. Raita, Mr. Sain.
Good morning, everybody. Welcome to City Hall. Welcome to council chambers in the meeting of the Los Angeles City Council for today, Wednesday, June 26, 2002. City Council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m., and meetings are open to the public. We can also be viewed live from home on your cable station, Channel 35. We can be viewed live via webcast from the city's homepage or heard via council phone. Mr. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Burton Glaner, Garcetti, Grill, Hahn, Holden, LaBange, Miskowski, Pacheco, Reyes, Ridley, Thomas, Weiss, Zine, Padilla, eleven members present, and Korn, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Before beginning with today's agenda, we do have a couple of special presentations. The chair recognizes first Councilmember Perry.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I would like to present to you today members of a program that is very important for people who have suffered throughout the world. It is called Program for Torture Victims. Standing with me today is the Executive Director, Michael Nutkowitz, I hope I pronounced your name correctly, and Diana Aiello, and Anna Deutsch, Noemi Rossler, and Michelle Williams. Diana is the President of the Board, and Anna is a co-founder. Noemi is a case manager, and Michelle Williams is the Deputy Regional Director for Amnesty International USA. I wanted to introduce you to this group of people today because they've dedicated their time working on behalf of men and women throughout the world who have been tortured and are determined to rebuild their lives and contribute to society. There are, these are a few of the members of the Program for Torture Victims. It's an exceptional organization that provides psychological, medical, and social services to victims of torture. Their clients are victims of state-sponsored paramilitary or tribal violence whose only crime was to belong to a particular tribe, clan, political party, or religion. Through their program, they offer the supportive framework necessary to restore a person's dignity, identity, and well-being. From the years 2000 to 2000 alone, PTV served 150 new clients from 28 countries, from Africa, Latin America, Central Asia, the Middle East, and Southeast Asia. This unique organization provides the only treatment program in Los Angeles County for victims of torture. It's an important group since it addresses the needs of over 40,000 refugees that have arrived in Los Angeles over the past 10 years, and it's estimated that nearly 20 percent of all those refugees and asylum seekers were subjected to some kind of torture. PTV provides an invaluable service in light of the fact that Los Angeles County is a home to the largest population in the United States of people and families who have fled countries that systematically practice torture. Today is an appropriate day to honor this group since it's the fifth anniversary of the United Nations Resolution that declares June 26 the U.N. International Day in Support of Victims of Torture, and I believe it's appropriate that we as a city join with the rest of the country in recognizing this group on this day. So it's my pleasure to present for your education the Program for Torture Victims with this certificate that recognizes their work and the importance of this day, and I'd like to ask the Executive Director to come up and just say a few words.
Thank you, Councilwoman Perry, in whose district our offices reside. In 1984, Anna Deutsch was here with us, and Dr. Jose Quiroga, who couldn't be here today, founded the Program for Torture Victims, which we call PTV, to help survivors of torture re-enter the community of humanity, to provide a space where there is help, comfort, and compassion, to transform the victim into the survivor, to allow the victim that has borne his pain in silence to become the survivor who gives voice to his experience. These wounded stories indeed live among us, as Councilwoman Perry mentioned, that L.A. County is home to the largest population of individuals who have been tortured, that the Los Angeles Immigration Courts adjudicate 60 percent of all asylum seekers in the United States, and it's estimated that a high proportion of those people were tortured. In fact, recent studies reveal that in the general immigration and refugee community that go to primary health care clinics, seven or eight percent of them were torture victims. In 1987, the U.N. Convention Against Torture was ratified, and 10 years later, the General Assembly proclaimed June 26 International Day in Support of Victims of Torture. Despite the fact that 127 states have ratified or acceded to the U.N. Convention, torture is still employed in over 150 countries. June 26 International Day is a time to renew the struggle against torture and impunity. It's a time to give thanks to, or to thank, the human rights activists, health care professionals, lawyers, and good-meaning people everywhere who work on behalf of survivors or protest against this diabolic and obscene practice. Most importantly, it is a time to say to the survivors that we renew our commitment to making this world one in which compassion, healing, and justice are possible. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Before you leave, Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, Mr. President. And thank you all for being here this morning as well. This July 1st, as you know, the International Criminal Court will come into being, and I just wanted to mention and invite you back here on Friday, we're hoping to do a presentation to commemorate that, and also to have the city call on President Bush to re-sign the International Criminal Court Treaty, which the United States signed, but in an unprecedented move, we actually un-signed. We promote a lot of civil rights here in this country, but we seem to have a problem with international human rights far too often, being one of the only countries, I think, with us in Somalia, that haven't signed, for instance, the International Convention on Treatment of Children. And I think for all of us, we really need to take Eleanor Roosevelt's maxim to heart and realize that human rights is not something distant, but it's something that's done here with our neighbors and in our workplaces, and that Los Angeles isn't just a place where torture victims come to, it's a place where they are tortured as well, and we look at the working conditions and some of the other human rights abuses here. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Perry.
Mr. President, members of the council, we're happy to have with us today George Wine and his wife, who, come on up here, constituents of the 12th District, and we're honoring George, who has served the city faithfully as Representative of the Metropolitan Water District Board of Directors since October 1993. George Wine represented the city on the following Metropolitan Water Committees: Executive Committee, Claims and Personnel Committee, Audit, Budget, Finance Committee, Subcommittee on Rate Structure Implementation, Subcommittee on State Water Resources Control Phase Eight Settlement Discussions, the Diamond Valley Recreation Special Committee, Special Committee on Museum Feasibility and Development, where he was later approved as an initial Director for the Foundation for the Southern California Water Education Center, whereas he chaired the External Affairs Committee of the Metropolitan Blue Ribbon Task Force and represents Metropolitan on the Southern California Association of Governments' Water and Environmental Committee. George served on former Mayor Richard Burden's Blue Ribbon Committee on Water Rate Restructure for the Los Angeles Department of Water and Power, also served on the Valley Industrial and Commerce Association, VICA Board, and Executive Committee, as past Chair of its Water Committee, and served on VICA delegation that represented Southern California's interest on the Bay Delta water issues in Washington, D.C. George has also served as a member of the Board of Trustees for the California Science Center. Outside of that, he hasn't done a thing, right? Now therefore, be it resolved, the adoption of this resolution, the City Council joins with the Department of Water and Power in commending and recognizing George Wine for his service and outstanding activities on behalf of the Metropolitan Water District, Southern California Board of Directors, and the City of Los Angeles and all of Los Angeles residents. So it's with great pleasure that we present this resolution to George, which is only a small token of our appreciation, because water is one of the most important, one of the most important facilities that any agency or any community may have, because without it, you don't have a city, you don't have industry, you don't have jobs, you don't have anything. So having somebody of his expertise, who's been willing to devote as much time as he has in his life to this important commodity, it's with my great pleasure and appreciation, George, that I present this to you. Thank you. Would you like to say what you think?
Thank you, all of you, for this document. It'll hang with many other documents that I have received over the last nine years. Everything about me, obviously, has been said. The only thing that I could add is the pleasure that I have had over these years of serving the city and feeling that I have not just paid back, but I've gone beyond that. I think I'm part of the legacy of Metropolitan Water District and the legacy of the City of Los Angeles, and for that, I will forever be proud to say that I've served the City of Los Angeles. Thank you again.
Chair recognizes Mr. LaBange.
Mr. President, members of council, George, I want to thank you and your wife for nine years. As Councilman Burton mentioned, he was the city's appointee, among others, and the member of the Board of Directors of the Metropolitan Water District, in such an important role that you played, and also the model of participation. I believe you had a 92 percent attendance rate at all meetings and functions, which is really a credit to your personal character, and also thankful to your wonderful wife, who allows you to help serve this City of Los Angeles, and also that important role on Metropolitan Water and how it is. And it's a fascinating story, but you continue to tell it. I thank you for your many years of service and look for your involvement in some other expertise in helping the City of Los Angeles. You're to be commended for your service. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. LaBange.
Mr. President, members of the council, one of the things that I've been very much involved with through the years in this city is emergency preparedness. And Ellis and I want to join together today in paying respects to Richard Rudman, who over the years in the Emergency Prepares Department have worked closely with him and KFWB Radio. Richard has been integral in the Emergency Alert System, worked tirelessly following the Northridge earthquake to prepare an after-action report and recommendations on emergency public information. He has provided countless hours of his time to the city's Emergency Preparedness Fair and other programs, has participated in many of the city's emergency operations organizations, annual workshops to assist in media, communications, public-private partnership issues, and without his efforts, KFWB would not have played an important sponsorship role in the city's emergency fairs. Richard has been a member of the Business and Industry Council for Emergency Planning and Preparedness, and for at least 25 years, Richard has chaired the Telecommunications Advisory Committee of the EPC, whereas he also provided leadership and expertise in the development of the area's first emergency broadcast system. I don't know if you understand how important that is to our area. Richard has worked closely with the National Weather Service of the city to address equipment and policy issues, so that weather-related emergencies are coordinated and communicated effectively. After 27 years of hard work, Richard Rudman has chosen to retire. Now therefore, be it resolved, that by the adoption of this resolution, the Los Angeles City Council thanks and commends Richard Rudman for his many long years of dedication and for his helping to make our city a safer place in which to work and live. Be it further resolved, the City Council wishes Richard Rudman many long years of healthy and happy retirement and success in all his future endeavors. And before I give this to you, I want to have Ellis, I'm sure wants to say a couple words too. Ellis, would you like to?
Thank you, Councilmen, members of the council. Richard has been a true partner in preparedness with this city for a long time. He was one of the first people I met with enthusiasm when I got to this city, and he has not let up. He has caused us to be a leader in preparedness, and he's been there with us to the end, and the fortunate thing is, he's going to still be there with us, because in retirement, he's going to be doing a lot of things in the world of warning and preparedness, and we are grateful for that. So thank you so much for helping us to do this.
Before we hear from Richard, Mr. LaBange.
I just had to, Mr. Burton, only because I know him. And Hal Burton, give Hal Burton a hand for all he's done for preparedness. He really deserves it. If Mahalan is the father of the water system and water and power, you're the father of preparedness, Hal, but also every one of the times we had the Preparedness Fair, there was Richard Rudman stringing it together for KFWB and all the work that KFWB and Jack Popejoy and everybody out there at the Los Angeles Zoo, I'm sorry, we're on the reconstruction there, that we can't get back there, but the wonderful job that you've done. And I think it's a great testimony to someone who works in a company and then takes bite of a need to help the civic educational process on an issue of preparedness, and Richard Rudman, you're par excellence. Thank you so much for what you do.
Now, now the Councilman LaBange has yielded the balance of his time to me. It's my distinct honor to receive this commendation from the City Council and the city, and also from someone who I really recognize as the father of emergency preparedness in the city, Councilman Burton. Now you know that I'm not the general manager of KFWB. There was some confusion about that years ago, and I retire after 27 years at KFWB and a company that started out as Westinghouse, actually, 30 years ago. And it's been my honor to work with the people in emergency preparedness in the city and the county of which it's a part, and the nation, and find out that there are many dedicated professionals that are ready when bad things happen. Los Angeles is in the forefront in this country on preparedness issues, thanks to Councilman Burton, the city, and the county, and I wanted to recognize in the audience Constance Perret, who's the Administrator for the County of Los Angeles Office of Emergency Management, who's here in my cheering section. Thank you, Constance, and the many people that it helps. And Los Angeles will continue to be a laboratory and a focus of the best and the brightest in emergency preparedness. We get a lot of practice here, and we're good at it. Thank you.
Let me just add that I want to, I would be remiss if I didn't recognize the contributions of KFWB to our efforts through the years, even sending one of the representatives of China with us, Jack Popejoy, who has been one of the outstanding announcers or people in radio that have covered, really with a great deal of knowledge, seismic events and so forth. So thank you both to Richard and to KFWB for letting us have the benefit of your expertise and your efforts through these years. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Burton. Mr. Clerk, first order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Burton moves, and Mr. LaBange seconds.
Committatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Garcetti moves, and Mr. Reyes seconds.
Before starting the regular agenda, there's several items to be addressed. Item number three, the Building and Safety Department and Council District 14 request this matter be received and filed in as much as the assessment has been paid.
Okay, members, request to receive and file item number three without objection, so ordered.
Item number eight, Building and Safety Department recommendation has concurred in by Council District One to continue this matter until July 10.
Members, request to continue item number eight without objection. Item eight shall be continued.
Item number nine, applicant has requested a continuance, and Council District One concurs to September 4. This is item number nine.
Okay, item number nine, request to continue, also without objection. There was one speaker card submitted under item number nine. Members of the public, please be advised that it is now continued to August 4.
Item number 22 is a matter that is currently in the Planning and Land Use Management Committee, and as such, needs to be continued to July 9.
Okay, members, another request to continue without objection.
Item number 34, Council District 14 requests that the matter be continued to July 2. Item number 34.
Item 34, also without objection.
Item number 35E is a special advance motion. The mover of the motion requests this matter be received and filed, 35E.
35E, request to receive and file without objection.
And 36, the mover of the motion on this also requests a receiving and file.
Item 36, request to receive and file. Mr. Zine? Okay, we're not there yet. Let's dispense with item 36. Any objection to receiving and filing item 36? Seeing none, so ordered. Item 39, there's a request to continue to July 10. Members, without objection, item 39 is continued.
Mr. President, that brings you to items numbers one and two and four and seven on the regular agenda, which are items noticed for public hearing.
Okay, items one and two do have speaker cards, let's call those special. Items four through seven, now before us, without request, members of the public to address the council on these items, we shall deem the public hearings open and closed. Members wishing to call any specials, items four through seven? Any specials? Seeing none. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Those are approved.
Items numbers 10 through 20 on the regular agenda, items for which public hearings have been held.
Items 10 through 20 now before us. Members wishing to call any specials? Mr. Reyes? Item 19, call special by Mr. Reyes. Mr. Zine? 15, call special by Mr. Zine? Any other specials? Items 10 through 20, seeing none. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll and balance of the items. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Those are approved.
Mr. President, item number 21 is a bid, is an accept bid and award of sale of landscaping and lighting district Prop K Assessment Bonds. The bids were opened this morning, and the City Minister of Ops has prepared a resolution for councils to adopt awarding the bid to Fidelity Capital Markets for aggregate principal amount of $19,630,000 with a true interest cost of five, excuse me, 4.556 percent. A motion from the floor is required to accept, to adopt the resolution.
Is there such a motion? Mr. Miskowski moves. Members wishing to be heard on this item? Seeing none. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved.
Mr. President, items numbers 23 through 40 on the regular agenda, with the exception of 35E, 36, and 39, are items for which public hearings have not been held.
And item 34 has also been continued.
Yes, there is also an amended motion that has been circulated on 35H.
Okay, members, these items have not had public hearing without objection. We shall consider them today. Members wishing to call any specials? Mr. Holden? 32 and 33 called special by Mr. Holden. Any other specials?
Council President, I'd like to continue number 28 for two weeks.
Request to continue item number 28, members, for two weeks. That would be July 10. Members, for two weeks, that would be July 10, without objection. Item 28 is continued. Any other specials? Seeing none. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll on the balance of the items. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Those are approved. 35H has amended. Correct. Next item?
Mr. President, on the continuation agenda, items numbers 42 and 43 are items for which public hearings have not been held. Motion is required on item number 43, and as much as two reports are in one file.
And I do have speaker cards on both of those items, let's call those special.
Item number 41 is a closed session item, do wish that to remain on the desk?
Let's hold item 41 on the desk, and members, as we return to items called special, let me announce, as it did yesterday, this being the last week of the fiscal year, all items acted upon today, we will be sending forth with, all items acted upon today, and all items approved today will be going forth with from council. Mr. Clerk, next item, please.
Mr. President, item number one called special, in as much as a member of the public who wishes to be heard.
Item number one now before us, council calls forward at this time, Mr. David Billford, followed by Steve Kim and Diana Creighton.
Good morning, Mr. President and members of the council. My name is David Billford, I'm an attorney. I represent Mr. Kim, who is the owner and operator of the Redondo Market and Liquor, who is the appellant on this matter. This matter has been in litigation for a couple of years. We had hoped that by hearing, a plan approval hearing before the zoning administration that the two onerous conditions that caused us a problem could be modified. There has been a stay for two years of these conditions, and there have been no problems with respect to criminal activity associated with this business, and all we were seeking to do was to maintain the security guard from 6:00 PM to closing instead of every hour that the business is open. Councilman Holden had spoken, actually somewhat favorably about this business when the conditions were initially imposed. And when we had this hearing on February 19, the LAPD supported the modification, as did Councilman Holden's deputy. Unfortunately, it was taken under submission by Mr. Green, the zoning administrator, who had indicated he is inclination to approve the modification. But then when he came out with his decision, he denied the request for modification of those two conditions. We're here before you simply asking that the status quo, which has existed for two years without ongoing problems, be allowed to be maintained, which would occur if this modification were approved. To my surprise, yesterday at the Plum Committee hearing, LAPD did not support the modification that they had supported in February, and as a result, Councilman Holden's office also indicated they supported the police recommendation to deny the modification. But I would simply suggest that you're going to put this gentleman out of business if he's required to hire a security guard every hour that this business is open. This business has been in the community for many, many years, and for the two years that the conditions were stayed, there have not been problems related to criminal activity at this location, and the modification would simply allow that to be maintained, because we're just asking that the security guard who is there from 6:00 to midnight be allowed to be there from 6:00 to midnight in the future. And Mr. Kim, the operator of the business, would also like to be heard.
Thank you very much. Let's hear now from Mr. Kim, and following Mr. Kim will be Diana Creighton.
My name is Steve Kim, and I'm owner of the Redondo Market Liquor Store, and I was there about six or seven years, and I had the trouble of this hearing for several years now, and I put in through the litigation. Well, I had big difficulties of operating the store financially because of the keeping that the security guard, and that was required only two days, Friday and Saturday, and now we are required to have them for the full hours operating. And that's too bothersome, as my calculation is about $6,000 a month, and that I cannot make such a profit to cover it. So that's why I request appeals and like that. And still, even though we had not much problem, sometimes I, my employees had some mistakes operating, still, no, not serious problem happened in the past two or three years, but somehow, well, I was not given of any favor from the decision makers. Well, I think it's quite unfair compared to many other stores around there, where they are probably much, probably, we are the best, and they are probably the worst than ours, but they don't, they are not given any restrictions, or we are given a lot of restrictions, we improved a lot, and people around there, many people, they need us, and they try to keep, keep my store open, but they, well, still, I have been such a big trouble. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Diana Creighton?
Good morning. I'm Diana Creighton. My name is spelled C-H-R-E-T-I-N for the record. I am chairperson of the South Orange Drive 2000 Action Committee. I have the support, and I also represent the Alsay's 1800 Block Club, the Mansfield 21st Block Club. I have the support from my fellow members of the Los Angeles Police Department, Wilshire Division, CPAP, Community Police Advisory Board, and also the Mid-City Neighborhood Council, Department of Neighborhood Empowerment. My family has been in the neighborhood for over 50 years. Three generations have tried to get Redondo Liquor to conduct a decent business. One of the points is that Mr. Kim had to be forced to clean up the liquor store, to add security, to put in lights. We need a security guard at all times. There are motels in the neighborhood, which has a lot of prostitution, drug dealing in and around it. We have a methadone clinic that is one block west of the liquor store, and also there's a public school bus stop across the street. Number two, longer hours do mean more problems, more time to loiter around the store. We have enough liquor stores in our neighborhood, each one in its own way has contributed one way or another to the life of the neighborhood. In the past, Redondo Liquor has been giving enough leniency when he has violated his conditions. Now it's time for the city representative to support the neighbors, the residents and the community of all of LA. Granting Mr. Kim his appeal will only set back the progress we have made in cleaning up our neighborhood. We have received support from the council members in the past, especially Councilwoman Rita Walters, Cindy Missakowski, and also Hal Burnson. We support, we need the support from you to help us keep our neighborhood clean, and we're asking you to not grant Mr. Kim his appeal. If there's any questions, I can entertain them.
Okay. Thank you very much for your comments. If we do have questions, we'll hear from the members directly. This concludes public comment for item number one. Chair recognizes Mr. Burnson.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the council, we planned committee met yesterday to discuss this case. Representatives there from the police department, from the planning department, the council office, and all agreed that the, and felt that the conditions which were imposed in the first place as part of this revocation should remain in place. There will be a reevaluation in six months to determine if there may be some relaxation. However, for the present time, it is deemed to be in the best interest of the community that the conditions which were originally placed be kept in place at this time. So that is the motion, I would move approval of the planning committee report.
Thank you, Mr. Burnson. Other members wishing to be recognized? Mr. Holden, may I ask you to press your button, please? Chair recognizes Mr. Holden.
Mr. President, members, this store, Redondo Liquor, is located in my district. In fact, I used to live around the corner where Twente Street, for many years where this store is located. I would say to you that we have been able to scrutinize these stores a lot more closely currently and hopefully in the future than we have in the past, in terms of how they operate in respect to the communities. The city has imposed strict requirements on all the operations, operators of these liquor stores, and I will say however they clean them up to some degree. They required, at least in this store, have a security guard certain specific hours. When this security guard requirement was imposed on the liquor store, there were lots of people down here, I don't know why, but they were here saying they supported Mr. Kim, I think you probably would remember that. They supported Mr. Kim if he were to put the security guards there and put lights in. I personally went out and checked the store out myself to make sure that he was in compliance at that time, but I have not been by there recently other than drive by, and I don't see any problems developing. However, I will say this, I'm not living there right now, and I have to rely on the people who live in the immediate area for a period of time that they've lived there. And also in the police department, I do nothing without the recommendation of the police department in relation to this type of operation. And if it's the opinion of the police department that they want to wait another six months, it's been two years, I don't know how many years it's been, that we've imposed these conditions from a standpoint of security on Redondo Liquor, then of course so be it. If the police department or the committee is making that recommendation, then Mr. Kim, I want you to understand that that is the recommendation, and that's the one that would be supported by this council person. Just try and continue to do the job, do it better, whatever. I understand there was some mishap on the part of one of your security guards, he had a toy gun. Is that the case? I was told that the day of the hearing, when they were about to make the decision, the police department was supporting it, that somebody, one of the security officers had a replica weapon, which was used, I suppose, to frighten, intimidate someone. That would cause us all a lot of problems, and you have to either take care of that individual by removing them from your premises. I'm not telling you what to do, but they caused you the problem, to best my knowledge. Police department was in the process of supporting the community and supporting the recommendation, but as of that incident, they withdrew that support, and I have to do the same. Sorry about that.
Thank you, Mr. Holden. Other members wishing to be heard? Seeing none, we have the report and recommendation before us. Mr. Clerk, would you please open the roll? Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is denied. Next item, please.
Item number two, a member of the public wishes to be heard on this matter, there is a Planning and Land Use Management Committee report that has been submitted.
Okay, item number two now before us, the council calls forward Ms. Sylvia Lynn Hawkins Ms. Hawkins, we'd ask you to keep your comments to the subject matter before us.
Thank you very much. Good morning, everyone. My name is Ms. Hawkins, representing Hizaville Housekeeping Service as a business entrepreneur owner. And my concerns is, I'll just cover comments, will you take one minute? It's concerning the 35 unit condominium complex at 9263 9329 Norwell Avenue. I'm concerned about the quality of the building material at this address, 100 units in one area. The zone of building north is not good at this time. I'm against redeveloping. I'm concerned about the material that you're going to build on in the northern part of the land, if it's going to be cheap material or expensive material. I was at a committee meeting, and one of the committee men was saying that they do not want to build cheap material on expensive land. As you see north, it's fires everywhere, it's bad weather everywhere, it's 76 degrees here and 95 degrees there, and I'm really concerned, I'm concerned in building new things north as a justice of too many things that we're building north. Even concerning the NFL stadium that we're considering building north, I think that's a bad idea. I think that we should consider building it southwest in District Number Eight, because there's too many things being gone north.
Thank you very much, ma'am.
Thank you very much.
This concludes public comment for item number two. Chair recognizes Ms. Gruel.
Councilmembers, this is a project in my district that's a renewal and an approval that was granted in the 1980s. We actually now are going to have a project that is a good example of infill housing, and really will be a plus for the community, so I would just like to ask for an I-vote on this item this morning.
Mr. Zine?
I must ask this question. Is it taking from 1980s to 2002 to go into the city bureaucracy to get to this point? I heard there been some stumbling blocks in between.
It did not. It was builders, et cetera. It was not the city's problem.
It wasn't the city's?
From my understanding, that's right, it was not the city's.
All right, thank you.
Other members wishing to be heard on item number two? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Mr. President, item number 15 is an item for which public hearing has been held, called special by councilmember Zon.
Mr. Zine, item 15.
The mayor's office has answered the questions I have, so we can move on.
Okay, other members with questions or comments on item number 15? Seeing. Mr. LeBange?
I want to hear about the mayor's business team and the importance that it does throughout the city in helping businesses move ahead to get the jobs necessary, so I just wanted to stand and support the mayor's business team and the track record they have, continuing them to work with the community. Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Burnson, for your support too.
Thank you, Mr. LeBange. Any other members on item 15? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item number 19 called special by councilmember Reyes.
Mr. Reyes?
I rise to speak on this item. Essentially, it's one of those bills that offers the city the ability to promote our capacity to improve those areas around the rail stations. It provides us the ability to look at elements such as joint venture, affordable housing. It talks about the creation of play courts, park recreational improvements, lack preparation, community centers. So all those things that would make these rail stations inviting, that would promote a reinvestment of those neighborhoods that are deteriorating along rail stations, this bill supports that type of a policy. So I just rise to share these thoughts with you, and hopefully we can continue developing in such a way where we take advantage of our capacity connected to our rail systems, our bus systems, and our shuttle systems, or dash, however you want to phrase that, so that we can address those needs of transit dependence as well as create new opportunities for development. Thank you.
Mr. Burnson?
You know, I just have a couple of questions about this, Mr. Reyes. Obviously, we support these, these type of activities around these stations, but are we talking about assessment districts? Well, who would pay for these? The people that live around the station, or what?
Yes, it would be part of the process in which those would be organizing and setting these up. It would be by the will of those who live and work around these areas, who own property around them. If they don't support it, it obviously doesn't happen, but it gives us a vehicle and a tool to do it.
The only questions that I have, and, you know, is number one, the fact is that you need a two-thirds vote of the, of the people, and I believe it would be the property owners in this case, because, because of the fact, and these being apartments, I'm not sure how that would play out, because in assessment districts, assessment districts are voted on by benefit, and the people are charged by the square foot or whatever it is. But you need the owners of the property. I'm not sure that this bill does what we really want it to do. We have ability, if it's a new project, for example, there are better ways than this. I presume you're only talking about an existing infill type situation here, where, where the community is already built, and you may be, because if you use the bonding methods that are open now for improvements, you can do that as part of the project, and it's built into the people that either buy or rent, and that would seem to me to be probably a more efficient way, because with this type of thing, I'm not even sure who would get of thing, I'm not even sure who would get to vote on this thing. And if it's the property owners who are landlords, believe me, it's not going to happen. Okay? So I'm just, you know, that's, those are some questions that I have. I just wonder, has this been any place else, do we have a, has there been a position adopted on this by the California League of Cities?
Yes.
Or by Southern California Association governments?
Yes, in our report, it's indicated League of Cities has responded to it.
What about SCAG?
At the hearings. SCAG, I'm not sure, but has gone through the, uh, build process throughout the state. One of the key points here, I appreciate your insight here, Council Burton. Is that it offers a little tool for those areas where property owners would want to figure out what other means can be available to them to make the rule.
Okay, so I'm always, I'm always concerned about state legislation that interferes with local jurisdiction.
Right.
And apparently this needs to be amended to clarify the role of local jurisdiction. So, uh, while I support the concept of what we want to do here, maybe Mr. Carson can give us some input. Uh, Mr. Carson, can you tell me, uh, first of all, is the author willing to make the amendments that would preserve local jurisdiction?
Yes.
He is. And what about the, uh, the vote that would be required, the two-thirds vote that is required in an assessment district?
No, that would remain the same. It's basically following the, the Street Lighting and Landscape Act of 1972.
And that would be the owners of the property, registered owners of the property who would vote on it. See, that's the flaw in the ointment here. Uh, if it's new, if it's a new project, obviously we can enact some of the bonding issues that are available for new construction. And, uh, well, I'm gonna, I'll, I'll go along with this provided we get the, uh, the amendments that preserve local jurisdiction. But I think there's a lot of questions about this that need to be explored or enhanced.
On the Bay Eighth, uh, hearing, League of California Cities, the author has made a very clear that they are willing to work, uh, with us in making that amendment.
Has, has, uh, SCAG done anything on this yet?
Not that I'm aware of.
Well, you know, as a new appointee to the, uh, Local Housing and Development Committee of SCAG, you can have an input on this when you attend your next meeting, next Thursday.
Thanks for that reminder.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Thank you, Mr. Burton. Chair recognizes Mr. Holden.
Mr. President, members of the, when I was a member of RTD, we established what is called a benefit assessment district. And for the first leg of the metro rail, the first 3.3 miles, 4.1 mile, that's what we had. And it was on a voluntary basis and the property owners agreed to assess themselves, declaring that it would be a benefit. And in order to change that, you had to get 25% of the property owners to rescind the action, to make the vote before the people, before the property owners, before it could , uh, stop the assessment. But then when you got to Universal Studios, the property was owned by, the majority of the property was owned by a certain individual. We decided, they didn't want to establish a benefit assessment district, even though they were benefiting from the fact that they had a station there. They said, put the station there. And once it was designed there, they're saying, no, we're not going to participate. Then you had to deal with the protection of the law, whereas others were paying for the benefit. He and they were not. And it turns out, it's litigated in court, and the district lost, I think RTD then, LACC at that time before it became MTA. So it was already been litigated that this concept will have serious problems in court. I don't know what's different in this legislation, opposed legislation, as it would be compared to what we did with RTD in terms of setting up a benefit assessment district. But I think the city attorney should have reviewed that before he got this far, number one. And number two, the legislative council, Sacramento should know, should revisit that lawsuit and see whether or not this can in fact be done. Maybe Carson, you can shine some light on it as you hold my time, but I foresee some problems. You want to respond? If you know about that lawsuit with RTD.
I vaguely remember that. This is simply building on the Street Lighting and Landscape Act of 1972. Basically, the same process, but they're expanding the purpose a little bit more to include more, a larger area for potential use of a business development district. It stems from the trolley operation in Southern San Diego County and National City, where they were unable to use it for expanded benefit assessment district around the red line trolley stop down there.
You were unable to use it?
Yes, they were unable, and yet the business, uh, community was presumed to be interested in doing that, but they were unable to use the 1972 act to do so. So this is merely a small increase of the types of things that can be covered by the 1972 act.
Well, this, uh, will all the property owners participate from, along the metro rail all the way out to where you go?
It would also be useful in Sacramento and San Jose.
Yeah, well, they already voted against it, the property owners. I mean, those guys down there was glad to stop having to pay those millions of dollars annually for the benefit, especially right now with the market being what it is and the rents being what they are and things have changed here. It's okay, we can try, but it's, put it in place, if it's legal, let's council should tell us that. I would suggest, however, that we, as an amendment, suggest that let's council, that this author look at the lawsuit that was imposed, that was filed against RTD or LACC as related to benefit assessment district.
Well, that was raised in the committee analysis in Sacramento. And apparently, this is not suspect.
It was raised, though.
Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. President. I was thinking the issue on the BRT in the San Fernando Valley, where MTA is going to build along the east-west corridor of BRT with improvements. Would this then negate their responsibility for landscaping enhancement and put it on the backs of the property owners? Where in fact, it's currently railroad tracks unimproved and the plan is to build a BRT, a bus rapid transit going from the west San Fernando Valley around the Westfield Shopping Center on Owens' Mouth or Topanga Canyon to Lancaster, to the Red Line Station. And part of the project is landscaping and fencing and improvements and pedestrian walkway, et cetera, et cetera. Would this then permit them to say, we'll put the bus in? And then the property owners have to assess if they want to landscape and do the other improvements? Would this give them an out? And if it does, then that's a serious problem. Because it has not been well received in portions of the valley from North Hollywood to the West Valley with the promise of landscaping improvements, lighting, all those other amenities that would go along with the project. And I'm just wondering, looking at reading about lighting and improvements and landscaping, if they can then say, well, now here's the bus and you homeowners, you have to assess yourselves to do these improvements.
I don't know. You may have a good point, uh, because this would be connected with the transit station.
Yes.
As far as I'm.
And there'd be stations along the route from Owens' Mouth all the way down to North Hollywood, to Universal Studios. And the plan from the MTA board was to build not only the route along this corridor, but to do the enhancement, landscaping and sound walls, et cetera. And reading that, I've got a concern that it may negatively affect the property owners where they're going to have to come back and assess themselves to do what was already promised.
Uh, I don't see any further definition of a mass transit stop that would exclude something like a bus service as opposed to a rail service where transit stop is used.
Because while we have light rail in portions of the city, the valley section from North Hollywood to the West Valley is going to be a rapid bus along this corridor that runs east and west. And that is, uh, of concern on the improvements, other than just putting down the pavement and having them run along the route. And if that's part of that, that will put the obligation for the homeowners to be assessed to do the improvements, that's going to be another slap in the face because originally they were promised subway and then light rail and now they're ending up with a bus. So it's been very controversial and this may add to that controversy of who's going to pay for the improvements.
Uh, this would not be a levy that could be placed on residences, though, but only beyond businesses.
Now, there are businesses that, that do front that in certain areas. It's both residential and business, but my concern is, does the assessment exclude residential strictly for business? Because as you get into Warner Center, you're into the business, and as you go through North Hollywood, you've got some businesses along the Chandler Route, along with apartments, condos, and residential.
After his response, Mr. Zine, I said you push a button again.
Well, I'll wait for an answer and I'm done. Thank you. Did that come up in committee?
Just to be very clear. Excuse me, Mr. Zine. The definition of a mass transit station means a station served by rail transit commuter rail or intercity rail service or a bus terminal. But the property owners would only be, uh...
And I'm looking at you, uh, for an answer because really, this is no, nothing more than another tool. You've got the Lighting Act of 1972, you've got the Belarus Committee Facilities Act of 1982. You have, um, these various tools by which if property owners desire to use them, they can to make improvements. Now, this is just another tool to do that. What it does, it expands our ability to look at an assessment area. It doesn't mean that a budget from a bus project should be in any way, uh, lessened or changed, knowing that there's a tool out there. We have to do our job to advocate for our communities, forget the best budget possible to do that project. But for the hesitation here, I'm trying to understand your hesitation, this should not be impacting the, uh, the budget of any project. This gives you another tool to make improvements and to create those amenities that we'd like to see in these areas. If you look at where the rail stations are going down on the light rail, they're in the older neighborhoods, they're capital intensive, the services are very limited, lack of police, lack of open space, lack of parks, lack of schools. This gives us a little tool to promote those types of elements, not the basic budget of a bus or rail project. Um, Mr. Carson?
I, I would hope that that protection is in there.
I mean, I'm trying to understand your hesitation.
There are many, uh, many different business assessment districts that could be used. MTA was apparently proceeding with their own budget on that. They could have chosen those other, uh, means of doing it, but they're more clumsy, they take more time, they may not succeed. If MTA were to decide to...
But it shouldn't impact the budget for the project, correct?
No, no.
See, that's what...
Mr. Reyes, then you recognize, Ms. Misakowski, and I know you're on the cue again, Mr. Reyes. Ms. Misakowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I'm actually in total agreement with Mr. Reyes. As this came through some election, what it was, was, uh, the Bennett, the Lighting Act and the other assessment districts were narrow in what could be done in some of the areas and the stations around MTA and other kind of rail projects. The communities, the business people as well as the residents people want more things done that weren't allowed in the definition of the benefit of the districts as they had previously set forth. So this allows a wider variety of things that allows MTA or any other agency to respond to the community, to put these things in the district along with the stops. A benefit assessment district always includes public caring. In fact, this came about as a consequence of the public caring from the community saying, we want these things. And MTA and other agencies are saying, we can't add those because those are only included in the box of what we provide. So, um, separately, the issue of what an assessment, whether or not a community wants an assessment, how it should be assessed, what should be in there, that's a fair discussion, case by case and area by area. But this just creates the, the envelope to include all the kinds of things that a community could want, as well as the other thing, amending it to say that there should be a clarification that if we do some wonderful, um, median landscaping and medium improvements and man jogging path, something like that, under an MTA project, who is going to maintain it? And that needs to be clarified upfront with the assessment so that if MTA is getting all the benefits of the assessment, but the city valet is the owner of the parkway or an adjacent area that has to maintain it, that there is clarity. So this is a very, very good bill. The details would be specified in each individual project as we get to look through it with MTA. But right now, the problem is that the, the capability of MTA to respond to the community's requests for these stops has been limited because the bill that they've used or the, the old act of assessment didn't include as much as needs to be included in these projects. So this is a, uh, I think a very positive bill to support and endorse. And as I say, if there's individual issues on assessments that were previously done and clarification needs to be done in a given area and specification with MTA, that is a specific detail that shouldn't block this capability, which is really going to be an enabling tool for communities.
Mr. Reyes, followed by Ms. Zine.
Yes. Ultimately, if we're going to be able to be creative and think out of the box as we say, we need to have more tools. But this bill does, it gives us that flexibility. It gives us the capacity to look at different ways to structure, how we can improve a station area. This in no way should give MTA or anyone else any reason to promote a good project with a good budget. This should not be having an impact on the budget decisions. Ultimately, the voter will decide. Ultimately, the advocacy on the property owner, whether it's from the property owners or with the property owners, the communities that are involved that want to see these improvements will engage the process. There will be public hearings, there will be decisions made within the community, and the stakeholders will decide, the voter will decide if they want to assess or not. The key here is, this give them tools to work with. This provides them the ability to look at, why not put a learning center where you might have a computer, a learning room, and a skateboard park so kids can come in, make them do one-hour computer learning, and perhaps give one-hour skateboard park near a rail station, knowing that the parents are two or three stops away. I'm talking about people who are single-family households. I'm talking about people who have to work two to three jobs just to pay for their housing. So these are the kinds of support systems that we should be offering as schools. There's no way, and then I'm amazed that you can't tell the councilmen that this is not, this should not take away the budget, that should be there for the busway. I mean, there's no way this, this thing could, should have impacted that. Because it's going to come from stakeholders and the property owners, not from MTA. MTA should do its job. Every agency in the city should be doing its job. It should not be relying on the stakeholders or the property owners to make those improvements. We should all be fighting for our fair share of our resources. This is an additional tool, that's all it is.
Mr. Zine, followed by Mr. Holden and Mr. Burton.
And I support what my colleague, Councilman Reyes, says on that issue, the obligation of MTA, but I equate this to the business improvement districts. We've established business improvement districts around the city and they have security, they have street cleaning. They're doing what the city of Los Angeles should be doing for the businesses. They're assessing themselves a fee to do what we should be doing in making those business areas positive for the people to shop. And I don't want this to turn into a situation where MTA promises something, it's like buying a car. You can buy the strip model, you can buy the car with all the accessories. And to give them an opportunity, and I don't have any problem with enhancing those facilities, but not on the backs of the people who are impacted by that to say, well, we're having the basic station and now to add the amenities, we're going to have to assess ourselves to do that when MTA has promised, at least in this project, to make that happen. That's all I'm asking for, is to live up to their commitment of the landscaping and the other improvements, which they sold the community, we put a BRT in, we'll have all these community enhancements, and they said, well, this makes it livable, versus, here's your busway and now you assess yourselves if you want to add the additions. That's my concern, and I don't know if you've been able to determine if or not that's a problem. I understand the necessity for it and the urgency and the reality of it, but at the other side, I see how people kind of slip through the letter of the law and oftentimes someone gets hurt on it. But I equate this similar to a business improvement district, where businesses are paying out of their profits to provide what we have an obligation to provide. So that's the issue that I have with this. But I don't deny that it's necessary, it's just, is it an escape for MTA to put it on the back to someone else?
Mr. Holden.
Um, Mr. Zine is correct. When your neighborhood is interrupted because MTA decides they want to put a transit way down in your neighborhood, your main car, they're, they're correct. They need to make you whole. They talk about curbs and gutters and sidewalks. They should be doing that as we impose... They should be doing that as we impose this on businesses. The planning committee, whenever there's a major development in the area, we say, dedicate some of that land to widen the streets and setbacks. We require that of the businesses. We don't set a benefit assessment district and have the general public in a sphere of influence in that area pay for it. Then why should we let MTA off the hook? If they want to run with this, discover that later on it's not going to be legal, be my guest. If I live in a sphere of influence of the benefit, which you consider to be assessment district, and I to be assessed for curbs and gutters because I'm a property owner...
World War III, and all these people coming up here, this metro person, he don't have, he don't even have his bills in order, yet he's like rapping long from the government.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your comments. This concludes public comments on item 43. Members wishing to be heard, beginning with Mr. Burns.
Yes, members of the council, I think it's very clear that the purpose of this legislation was to encourage recycling, which is now not occurring with private haulers. So I would urge that we support Mr. Labonge's report, which requires, which would allow for the tonnage that actually goes into landfills to be the portion that the fees are imposed upon, and would actually reward people for recycling. Because the purpose of recycling is not to fill our landfills. And the way this is best accomplished is by Mr. Labonge's motion, and I would urge support of that, and I would hope that we can dispense of this before we lose a quorum here today.
Did you wish to say anything before we proceed? If not, Ms. Misakowski.
Mr. President, yes. Judy Wilson, Director of the Bureau of Sanitation, I just have a few staff remarks. There is a lot of consensus on the fact we need to improve our recycling, we need to focus on the commercial and multifamily that is served by the private haulers. The purpose of this fee is to raise money to support recycling programs. Now, one thing I want you to be aware of, there's a lot of talk about sending their tonnage to material recovery facilities, also known as MERS. Only about 10 to 12 percent of the material sent to a so-called dirty MERS, which is mixed trash, actually is diverted. The rest goes to the landfill. So we felt, in addition to being easier to audit, the revenue that we really need for this program, we could incentivize them to do recycling. For example, you might look at the tonnage that's actually diverted from the MERS that doesn't go to the landfill, and they get a rebate on the money they pay. But we want the money upfront, based on grocery receipts, and if they demonstrate they've actually diverted it, then we can give them either incentives or rebates. That's the type of program we want to put together. I have staff with me from Solid Resources, Barry Bergerson and Michelle McManus, have worked very intensively on this and asked your detailed questions, but that's really the big picture.
I just want to add one thing I didn't use in my full three minutes. The purpose of this is not to make it easier for you and your department. The purpose of this is to accomplish recycling, remember that.
Ms. Misakowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. I agree that that was the purpose and that is the purpose of this fee. But it seems to me that rather than having this potential division, that there is a solution, and that is, if we do it on grocery receipts, like almost every other city in the county does except for one, and every other city across the country does, and we are actually the only city that doesn't even have this fee, so I think establishing a fee has a lot of credibility, is why couldn't the fee be discounted to the haulers on the evidence that they would present on a grocery receipt, that a certain percentage of their trash has been taken to a recycling facility, and the receipt back from the recycling facility showing how much of it was recyclable as opposed to going to landfill? In other words, you'd have a fee established based on grocery receipts, they would have the ability, they would have the obligation for the discounted fee, which is going to be in the interest of any business, to show that they are doing what the purpose of this was, which was to recycle. And if they take 10 percent of their trash to a MERS recycling facility, and then are found, out of that 10 percent that they've taken there, 5 percent is recyclable and 5 percent wasn't, they are going to have transactional information, because the MERS takes up stuff to landfill based on what the haulers bring them, that this then solves the purpose. Grocery receipts, but grocery fees discounted for recycled material that has been valid, and it does two things. It incentivizes them, one, to get the discount on the receipt, on the tax or the fee, and it also incentivizes them to do it right, because the more they take to a recycling facility, that is better handled, better clean recyclable materials, the bigger their discount and the less fee that they pay the city. Has that approach been looked at? And I wouldn't like it as a rebate, I would like it as a fee accountability based on, you know, they tell us what their grocery receipts are, they calculate the tax, and they show and attach on that fee schedule what they've done and the validation by their recycling companies that this has been accepted.
That's precisely what we had in mind. We had talked about either some sort of incentive or rebate or discount, but the point was to get the money in the door based on grocery receipts, which is an easy audit, and then if they can prove to us that diverted the tonnage with something credible like the transaction that we're talking about, then they would have, you would put a discount. I'm going to just kind of have Michelle McManus come up, I think she's been really doing the detailed work, and she might want to add something to that.
Okay, well, again, the importance of making it work is to make it work easily and quickly, and not have somebody who presents something that city finance agencies say, "Well, we have to audit it, it's going to take us three years to guarantee," it's got to be able to be upfront, clear, explainable, you know, fill in the boxes, supply the appropriate information which verifies what they're saying they're doing, and it's just clear across the board and managed in that manner. So if that can be accomplished, and the ordinance has that capability, I appreciate it. And I would just like to ask, there's something that's been submitted on the desk, it's called proposed amendment to ordinance, it's not clear who presented it, where it came from. No, though, there is one that is actually item 41A, that is the one you have as a motion, but in addition to that, there's a blank sheet with a, it's adding a definition on the purpose of the fund.
Correct. That is a technical correction, it was actually brought to our attention from one of the responses that we received from our stakeholders. Basically, the intent of the ordinance is that all people, all haulers, whether they are recycle materials or otherwise, are covered under the permit to the extent they provide us with both diversion and disposal information.
Okay, so this is a technical amendment, that's what is identified?
That's correct. So we want to make sure that recyclers provide us with information. Now, relative to your question of discounting, it all depends on how it's administered. The problem is, if you offer a discount upfront, normally it is said, well, how it's been explained us, again, on tonnage base, this is the tonnage that went, you know, that's disposed, this is the tonnage that was recycled and it went to this facility. If that's the information, then we, again, are stuck going to individual facilities, and many of these process facilities are not solid waste permitted and not obligated to provide information even to the state, and it's the burden is on us to determine whether that's accurate. Now, if it's somehow administered, so we take their recycling and they provide all of the backup documentation upfront, or we don't honor that.
Most fee-based businesses in the city provide information to us, and we accept that. We accept people who are doing business provide what they are doing. We audit it from time to time, we specify how they should fill out their forms, what the required parameters and the materials we see. So we can put all that upfront and not have the obligation of, other than in a normal auditing process, looking at and checking. So we need to work with these companies, both in the hauler companies, the MERS companies, and the landfill companies, to get on the same page, to get everybody understanding what is being suggested, and it is exactly the same principle, do not charge a fee for that accurately, and hopefully incentivize material that is being recycled according to all the recycling standards.
Mr. President, PDH of RIA from the City Attorney's Office.
Thank you, Ms. Misakowski.
If I may, let me clarify the response to your question. In fact, the ordinance does exclude all receipts that are received from the collection and sale of source-separated material. So all that's recycled now, those receipts are excluded from the measure of the fee already. That's the way the ordinance provides in two places, both in the definition of the grocery receipts that are subject to the ordinance and the imposition of the fee. So, again, we say it twice, just to be absolutely clear, that is addressed upfront as to the accounting and the department's ability to go in and verify that information, they have that administratively, they're going to need to develop, and they will develop, the permit application and all the requirements that go along in terms of reporting for that, they do that administratively. And if I may, with respect to the question that you asked about the amendment, I'm not aware of that second one that's been circulated, other than to say that that point has been made in a communication that we received regarding the ordinance. I believe that, again, that's not identified, it's a motion or anything, just an amendment, that's an unnecessary amendment. The purposes of the fee and the purposes for which the revenues can be used are expressly stated in the trust fund ordinance, and I believe that amendment is not necessary.
Thank you. Mr. Holden, followed by Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Pacheco, Mr. Valdez, Mr. Reyes.
I just want you to owe my time when I ask a question from the City Attorney's Office, the mayor's office, CLA, et cetera, are you supporting the grocery receipts? And maybe you briefly say why.
Rather than tonnage?
Oh, sorry, from the Doofu Joker, from the CAO. At this point in time, we feel that we should go forward with the recommendation to use grocery receipts as the...
Well, say that again, because we'd be distracted, and I want some of the members, when they vote, they'll know why they're voting on one, A or B. So when the FBI checks on them, then they'll know, they'll have a good answer for them, but go ahead.
At this point in time, we're supporting our recommendation, A, using grocery receipts as a yardstick for determining the fee for this program. The one thing that's important is that I understand what's being said by some of the recycling community, and the fact that we need to encourage recycling. I feel that what Councilwoman Misakowski has mentioned, that we create some incentive programs that, in fact, the department is willing to bring forward and will incorporate to this program, should achieve that goal. At this point in time, we would like to go forward with grocery receipts, recognizing that it does constitute a critical revenue factor for our budget, that's a separate issue. But at this point in time, grocery receipts, I think, is reasonable on a go-forward basis. Once we have some experience with this program, we can revisit the tonnage issue, but at this point in time, we need to put this in place, use grocery receipts, develop incentive programs to ensure that our recycling goals are met and addressed through this program.
City Attorney? We've prepared the ordinance and have approved it as a form of legality, really the basis for the fee is a matter of policy for the council to determine.
Right, Department, you can repeat.
The department is dedicated to reaching one goal, 70 percent, which is the council goal for year 2020. There's only, the only people in this room that are accountable to you and to the mayor for reaching that goal are the department staff. My obligation is to do two things, as long as we are levying a fee, that we are levying a fee in fairness, so that all haulers are paying their fair share, and secondly, that we provide a revenue fund for which it is intended. A, to provide some subsidized programs for those sectors that do not have the opportunity now, because it does cost more in the most predominant sector that that applies to, apartments. And I understand that, I find it rather ironic that people are getting up here supporting tonnage based because of apartment dwellers. The fact remains, the council directed us to look at this fee, to establish a fund so apartment dwellers could have this opportunity. Right now, there's a very nominal amount of tonnage that is being diverted. It costs more, and your property managers are unwilling to bear that additional cost. The only way we can give those sectors the opportunity to recycle is to develop revenue so that we can actually subsidize that form of recycling. The other thing this fund hopes to do is to develop new diversion programs. Many of the companies that are currently using your dirty MERS are doing so because it's market-driven, and for better, we support that, we would like to encourage it. If it would administratively made sense, we would certainly want to encourage that. But more importantly, we're looking at the diversion still in there. That waste stream includes food waste, that waste stream includes non-degradable products like styrofoam, like plastic, food elements, things that are sitting in your waste fast but right now in your council offices. And those things are not feasible to recycle without additional money, without subsidy, without funds to market those programs and get them going. And to those two reasons, staff is supporting a grocery receipt. We feel grocery receipts is something equitable, so that we will be able to ensure that all haulers are paying their fair share. And it will give us funding so that, A, we will be able to give recycling opportunities to those sectors where cost does not allow them to do it now, and most predominantly that's department dwellers, and will allow us to actually attack the waste stream, the waste that's in the waste stream that is not recyclable now. And that is the only way we effectively, long-term, we'd be able to reduce the waste stream and actually look at closing landfills.
The mayor's office. Holden and Mr. President Brian Williams, Deputy Mayor on behalf of the mayor. I'm sure you're all aware, the mayor's been intricately involved in the formulation of this ordinance. His main concern, number one, is protecting our environment, and number one, point A, is ensuring that we maximize our ability to recycle. In that event, he's absolutely supportive of this ordinance, so the question then becomes, does he support tonnage versus grocery receipts? It's our belief and our contention at this point that the item that provides the greatest incentive for the haulers to recycle is tonnage, but because of the lateness of the hour and our need to pass this ordinance today, we're asking that the ordinance be passed, and that if you do not agree to have a tonnage-based method, that we come back within three or six months and have staff prepare a method to have a clear audit of the tonnage base, but the bottom line is, we think that tonnage-based is the way to go. But if that is not the decision of the council today, we are supportive of the ordinance, but we'd like the Sanitation Department to go back and take a look at a way for us to monitor the haulers and to provide an accurate accounting of the situation.
Next, CLA. Hey, Mr. Burns, you can exit when you choose to do so.
Just very briefly, the council approved nine million dollars in the coming fiscal year budget from this fee. Essentially, if the council does not adopt an ordinance in the very near term, within a week or two at most, it will have a budgetary impact. So our recommendation would be to proceed with the ordinance before you, on a grocery receipts basis, and similar to what the mayor's office indicated, instruct a report back on how to restructure the fee for a tonnage base in the future and deal with some of the issues that the city attorney and the department identified. And very briefly, Councilwoman Cindy Misakowski is correct, most of our fees are based on self-reporting, but we do have a legal right to audit, and there remain some questions about how we would audit a tonnage-based fee, our legal right and access to the landfills, et cetera, so there are a number of issues that do have to be worked out.
I'm afraid that members, you've heard from the various departments, this matter did come before my committee, the joint committee with Public Works as well. I must tell you that next to the death penalty when I was in the Senate, I've not gotten as much lobbying from the industry as I got from this measure. Why would they do that? They want to, they're favor recycling? If they were, they would have done it on a voluntary basis. They did not. The city had to take the initiative for the multifamily units. The city can implement this program right now, we do it on the fee basis, grocery receipt basis, not the tonnage. I don't understand even how the mayor's office can say that would be their option, since they include it in that budget, the money's got to receive right away. For example, you get 10 million dollars for grocery receipts, you get 2.5 million, we're going to the general fund to offset the cost of personnel, but you subtract it from the budget of the Department of Sanitation. You get 7.5 million, we're going toward education and recycling programs. Your office ought to know that. Now, we can't do it any more Mickey-mosling around here. Either we're in favor of recycling, or we're not. We're favoring cleaning up our environment, or we're not? We're favoring saving our landfills, or we're not? And I don't understand how the community can come out here and say, "This is the way to go." to go. Why didn't they tell the haulers that long time ago? It's a strange partnership. And maybe they've been misinformed also by one way or another. This is a corrupt business, one where the FBI has looked at it from time to time to time. Don't get entrapped. Clean up the environment. That's why we elected. Save our communities, improve our quality of life, that's why we elected. And this lobbying, hem-hawing is going to have to stop. I tell you that from where I sit, it's virtually disgraceful. Every member of the department, including the city attorney, C O, C L A, is saying, this is the way to go. And then I see this hedging. Why? Hedging, why? I've seen it before. When the deals are being cut, I've seen it before. I hope I don't see it again today. It's disgraceful. I support the department. I support grocery receipts. You want to do a study, Mr. Mayor? Later on, do your study. But you pay that department heads. We pay these general managers, they give us the best advice. Are we going to reject it today? I submit that we should, we should support them.
Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, Mr. President. A couple of things, I think it's an important point that Mr. Holden made clear, which is that only 2.5 million of this goes now under the findings to balancing the budget. That's correct, Mr. Fujioka? So the impact for the general fund is not 10 million as was previously believed. I think that all of us support going towards a tonnage-based system in the long term. The question is what we do this year. We do have some fiscal responsibility to the greater good. We also do have the need to make sure that we have the sort of recycling programs and the personnel to provide that education to move either towards commercial or apartment recycling here this year. And that's really what's at risk here. I'd be willing, if somebody can point out a system that can work now for tonnage, to continue this for one week, but just one week because I think we do need that money to be there as quickly as possible. I think that our need to recycle, to get those recycling programs in place is paramount. You know, hardly a day goes by when I think us, we as council members, don't get calls from folks that live in apartments wondering why they can't recycle, and certainly there's businesses that want to be doing that too. But the first step may be that we have to go with grocery receipts this year because that is a way of getting those programs done. And I want very clearly both the industry, but more importantly, the environmental community as well, to know that that does not mean that a year later, we suddenly have forgotten about this. Certainly, for those of us who ran on and prioritize and see recycling as the first and foremost duty of this body and for our sustainable living in this city, want to make sure that that tonnage gets in there as quickly as possible in a responsible way. So if there'd be a second, I'd be willing to continue for one week because I know there's still a couple proposals that I've just found out about today that may allow us to implement a tonnage system this year. But if we can't put that together in a week, then we should come back and go forward with grocery receipts.
Mr. Pacheco.
Did you make a motion to continue for a week? I'll move the previous question on the motion.
I just asked a question.
You can do it for point of information.
I haven't asked a point of information if there's a motion.
Mr. Laban.
All right. So then I have two minutes and 39 seconds left. All right. So what was your motion, Mr. Garcetti? To continue for a week? My motion is to continue for one week. And where are we going to get into week because as we've got comparison between CLA versus tonnage versus grocery receipts?
Is to look at, I know that there's been a couple individuals who come to my staff saying there might be a system to be able to do a tonnage implementation system. And I don't feel prepared to discard those yet today.
And I guess the only thing I'll share with the body is, and I understand Mr. Holden's concern about the impacts on the budget, but I think the, we only budgeted for six months of revenue collection, right? Nine or six?
Increased from six to nine.
It was increased from six to nine. Okay. So then it becomes time-sensitive and a week, two weeks or a month?
In order to collect the revenue budget, it'd have to be published by August 1st. Okay. So essentially, you've got a week or two allowing for mayor signature in time to publish.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Laban.
President, members, the council asks for your support on my amendment there for tonnage. I think it's a simple way to go. And then also I ask that the Bureau of Sanitation be directed to look at that. And if anyone who files these reports misguided the city of Los Angeles, they'd be penalized under perjury of law for the reports that they file. They have to file a countless number of reports on the amount of trash they dump in landfills. And all our work is regulated. So there's another, there's a regulation that we go to. And I, for one, truly believe that it's important that if you have a regulation that you follow to the T, and then if it does not work, if what they're following right now is not being respected, then what respect do you have at all? I think it's real simple to go that direction. We had a nice joint committee, Councilman Holden and I, Public Works, environmental. And out of that, I saw this as an opportunity to move ahead because what frustrates me about government is when we set up another regulation and set up 22 people to look at something when they have something already existing that they can look at and give them the support staff that they need. It's nice to see the deputy mayor here give that support staff, but not 22 people. Give me 22 people to pick up couches, give me 22 people to clean the streets, but not to audit. That should be done technically with computerization and other things that you have. And then if someone violates the law, they're penalized by perjury and get very tough and have our city attorney, Rocky Del Gadeo, get very tough on people who don't file the reports properly and mislead anyone, whether it's the sanitation bill or any other bureau of the city of Los Angeles on government-required reports that they have existing now. If we're not respecting them, there's something wrong. Members, it's something that is very important to move ahead on. Eric spoke of trying to continue the week. The fiscal year starts the 1st of July. We're not meeting the 4th of July holiday next week. And whatever one's calendar is, I think it's before us now, we can make an honest judgment whether you want to do this or not at this time. So I call for that. And also I further ask that within six months, we review it again to make sure we do the right thing, to make sure we are meeting what your needs are in the Bureau of Sanitation, which I'm very proud of, that 58% of Los Angeles' private haulers that we collect from the streets is diverted from a landfill. And now we could work with the apartment districts throughout the city that has private haulers to make sure they could become part of that success story and divert that to landfills. I think everybody wants to be green and we want to be good. Thank you, bye-bye.
Mr. Reyes.
Mr. Councilperson and colleagues. Representing a district where I have 70% renters and a vast majority of the housing stock is more than four units, I truly appreciate the effort we're trying to achieve. But I also understand that because we don't have a program and a process where we can inform and educate people how to deal with their bulky items, and I'm picking up two tons of waste every day. I think we're up to like 190, I forget what the outrageous tonnage we're picking up. On top of that, these are the neighborhoods that tend to be along the river. So a lot of these items fall into the river and we pollute the ocean. So all this is connected in a very direct way with our environmental issues. So I'd like to propose a compromise, a hybrid. And that is that we move on the grocery receipts because it does help the city monitor, enforce the ordinance in a more efficient manner. But however, we want the Bureau of Sanitation to mandate and implement a baseline tonnage and diversion goal for each year to the satisfaction of the council and mayor's office. So we can reach our 70% goal that we set for 2020. And we have the Bureau of Sanitation report back in 30 days, provide us with a baseline tonnage and specific diversion goals per year so that we can reach this diversion. So this would be a compromise, allows us to reach our goals, allows us to deal with putting together a concise program, building upon what Consul Mysikowski has already identified earlier, and it's a compromise. Everyone wins. We're dealing with the environmental issues. I definitely need to be able to deal with the transitionary nature of apartment structures. We pull the cobbler, the industry, and we have the community supporting us with the big picture. So again, it's not perfect, but it gives us a compromise and gets us ready to put ordinance in the books so we can start enforcement in a timely manner. That's a friendly amendment.
Is that accepted as a friendly amendment? Okay, thank you, Mr. Holden. Chair recognizes Ms. Rule.
I have a question. If we didn't have to consider money at all, we weren't trying to balance our budget and had a particular category that we were expecting, whether it be two and a half million or greater, what's the best way of making sure we recycle? I live in a condo townhouse complex and, you know, I recycle my own, but I see a lot that are not because the people who pick up our trash do not recycle and my neighbors don't recycle. But an honest answer about that, and in the second part of the question, and if you wouldn't mind holding my time, second part of the question would also be relative to, we already have a tonnage system that exists, correct? We accept that as it is currently? No. Okay. So if you can answer those two questions. Regarding the tonnage system, the state has a tonnage system that requires all disposal facilities and other processing facilities required, who we are required to have a solid waste permit to provide information on a jurisdictional basis. Now, many of your process facilities, i.e. your murs, do not have solid waste permits. So if they say we've got so much diverted tonnage from this murf and so much of the material went elsewhere, they do not necessarily have a tonnage-based system in place. Also, they have no report requirements. Secondly, the tonnage-based system is all based on self-reporting. It is a database. And like any other database, it is as accurate as the information that goes into that database. Basically, it works that as trucks enter these permitted landfills, they identify their load, where it came from, and how much tonnage it is. There's a big assumption, I mean, people providing this information and taking it in are the truck drivers and the gatekeepers. Now, there's a big, you know, does a truck driver know whether West Hollywood is part of the city of L.A., whether North Hollywood is the city of L.A., whether Hollywood is the city of L.A.? Does the truck, does a truck driver know whether Burbank is the city of L.A. or Sherman Oaks? Sometimes they know where their location is. But if, so you answered my question of whether there's tonnage system. Correct. And I would hesitate to disagree with you. My family has a trucking company. And those truck drivers know different things. And they go and they are, if they go and say, I have so much weight on my truck, and they go and the highway patrol stops whomever stops them, they get a ticket if the tonnage is over, okay? They understand that. So I would disagree with you on it. Truckers don't know or understand that. However, my second question was, if we were strictly looking at recycling, how would we, what would be the best, again, incentives? Because what we're hearing from the people in this community and some of the waste management companies is that they believe that's a better way in which to reduce and that that will encourage them to recycle if we're talking about incentives. The, okay, there's a big assumption in the whole process that if you, if you only tax disposal, that it will incentivize recycling because they will want to recycle more. Now, there's an assumption that those, if they get a discount rate, the truck, the hauler, that they will pass on whatever discount they get, and we're talking about dirty muring, back to the customer who actually has the dirty murf tonnage. I'm talking about just recycling, whether it's passed down or not, okay? It's just about recycling, okay? So from that answer, from a purist point of view, recycling, source-separated, is by far the way that you want to encourage, okay? And many industries lend themselves to recycling, to source-separated recycling. There are some that do not lend them to that, to that way. And those are the other sectors that we would probably want to incentivize. Multiple family is one of them. So one thing is, your answer to my question is that you believe that grocery receipts tax is a better way to encourage recycling than having a tonnage? I would disagree. Yes or no? Yes or no on that one? I mean, you do believe? It's a different question. It's not quite the... It's based on recycling. If we want to have more recycling in the city of Los Angeles, reduce the amount of tonnage in our landfills. The best way is grocery, is grocery receipts because we need to hit the waste that currently is not recyclable. That is currently, and that is food waste in restaurants, and it's currently styrofoam and, and plastic implements that are very expensive and your commercial industrial people are not afford.
Yes, members of the council, you know, obviously, one of the concerns that I have here is that whether this is just about money. What I'm hearing is, and it doesn't appear to be an awful lot of money, although everything is important when we're short. What's important here is achieving the goal of recycling. And I'm at a loss to see how just charging a tonnage fee at the dump is going to basically increase the ability to people to recycle. I'm concerned about what the money's going to be used for in sanitation, whether it's going to be really used to reduce the flow or just for other programs, they call incentives. We already have pretty good incentives for the city and we're doing a pretty good job of recycling as far as the city's concerned. I also am aware of the fact that there's a crisis as far as time is concerned. I think Mr. Reyes's motion made some sense. Perhaps we need to move forward now with what we can do, but we must instruct that within six months, not, they do a study for six, within six months, the mayor's office be responsible for it in conjunction with sanitation and come back with a plan that involves a grocery, that involves a difference based upon tonnage. So that we recognize what's actually being taken out of the waste stream because of recycling. Now, we all know that these companies, if they get anything back, has a benefit of the grocery receipts procedure. They're not going to give it back to the great payers. They never give anything back to the great payers. You know, these are private haulers, and I'm not arguing with their right to make a profit. They have, they're entitled to make a profit. And if you think for one minute this is going to wind back up and cut rates for the people who pay for rubbish collection in the private sector, you're absolutely wrong. So maybe we need to think in terms, what do we have before us today? We have an ordinance before us today that calls strictly for grocery receipts? Okay. Excuse me. And if we enact that today, what does that mean in terms of we will be able to enact the tax immediately? Is that correct? And how will we ascertain that we're getting the correct amount in grocery receipts? In grocery, in grocery receipts, is it going to be from the landfill or be from them or their books as they show their books? Based on information provided by the operators? Okay. And is that based, is that, is that provided that they are required to report under penalty of perjury, just as you would, on sales tax or on income tax or anything else? It is. So we do have a means of enforcement. Do we audit these people on a periodic basis? We always have the ability. I can't speak without enough... Well, obviously, this is going to be an extremely important thing. We have to have the ability to audit. Absolutely do. Absolutely. Okay. I'm going to, I'm going to go along with Mr. Reyes's amendment to go ahead, but within six months, I only want to make this for six months. We'll limit the ordinance to six months. And then, within six months, excuse me, just let me finish and I won't have to talk again. Within, besides, you didn't hold my time while they were talking like Mr. Holden for 40 minutes, okay? The, within six months, the mayor and the sanitation and public works department will come back with a, with a tonnage program that can be enacted where we can actually show the amount of diversion that's being taken out into landfills, solid waste stream, and the use and the proposed uses that this money will be used for, whether it's rebates to the people who are doing the recycling or whether it's to the... to the people who are doing the recycling, or whether it's to the ratepayers who are paying for the pickup, or whatever else we're going to do. I think it's as simple as that. And I think that unless you want to lose quorum pretty soon, I'm going to support your motion, Mr. Reyes. I think you have, and being as the fact that you have, most of your constituents are being serviced by commercial pickup and haulers. And strangely enough, Mr. Holden, not one member of the trash hauling community contacted me. I just wonder why. Thank you. Mr. Holden.
Mr. Burnson, because you voted your conscience whether they contact. Not. Mr. President, members, I'm looking here at the grocery, not grocery receipts, but tonnage space. We have to hire additional fifteen people to implement it right away, which was not stated by the staff. Fifteen people. Now, it's just no way you can get the speed in a timely fashion to offset the deficit in the budget that was taken away from the department. So I think we should impose some common sense here, number one. Number two is that Ms. Gruel talked about it there, family being in the trucking business. That's a legitimate, honest trucking business. One that I supported, the truck ordinance, you know, when they tried to impose on your family and I said, no. And right then, when I supported your family, and I'm right now. And what I'm saying to you is that if I have to, with my faith and trust and to either side of this argument, I'm not going to trust the haulers. We already know what kind of business they do for the most part. I'm going to trust the staff and this recommendation. Mr. Reyes, you're correct. We can implement post haste by grocery receipts and get it done right away. And it's of more better benefit. Mr. Burnson, yes, you want to look at tonnage in six months? Look at it. Do a comparative analysis. Come to the table saying, here's what the grocery receipts are going to provide in terms of recycling and revenue, and here's what tonnage is going to provide in terms of revenue and recycling. And then, once the facts are presented to the public, then let us vote. Let's the intent and the spirit of the motion that I'm accepting as a friendly amendment, that both approaches, both solutions to this problem of recycling will be presented to the council in six months. Can the staff do that? Yes or no?
Yes.
All right, if the staff can do that, then that's my understanding of the motion. And then, of course, the council decides what should be their policy. Hopefully, you'll have a recommendation when you present that to the council. And I think that's the sense of the motion and I'm ready to vote.
Thank you, Mr. Holden. Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. If we can achieve this compromise, I just wanted to get direction from the staff or the city attorney, how would my amendment attach itself? Knowing that I want to... Okay.
Does I understand that it would be an instruction to the department and the staff to report back in six months what we respected of?
No, no, no. No, no, I said thirty days.
Thirty days, whatever.
Okay.
Well, thirty days would only be the effective date of the ordinance.
Well, then, once the ordinance is passed, within thirty days, survives the baseline tonnage and specific diversion goals per year. So that we can reach our seventy percent diversion, so we don't lose sight of the fact that recycling is important, that we do maintain our priorities with the environment. But knowing that we have these budget issues that we have to contend with, being that we've already looked at these grocery receipts at X amount in our budget, and that's a reality we have to deal with. So, again, it's just a compromise that tries to converge the rest of our programs.
Ms. Misakowski.
I move the previous question on the interim matter, which includes, I think, all the amendments.
All right. Mr. Clerk, do you want to bring us to speed as to where we are on the matter?
There are no more speakers, so previous questions do not have to be voted on at this point. There are a couple of motions on the desk. The first motion is put forward by Councilman Garcia to continue this matter one way.
All right, we'll have that one declared, ruled withdrawn.
Okay. Item number forty-three contains both an A and a B. The A is environmental quality, waste management, and A. And there isn't an amendment to that which does affect the ordinance. The ordinance, including these amendments, is currently available for consideration by the council, as well as a friendly amendment that was put forward by Councilmember Reyes to initiate the grocery receipts now, but request building safety to mandate baseline tonnage system to reach a seventy percent devotion goal and request the, excuse me, the Bureau of Sanitation report back in sixty days relative to reaching diversion goals. Thirty days to reach those goals.
I believe Mr. Reyes's motion was for the, to be, for six months and to report back within, within six months with a plan by the mayor's office. I think that was amended by me.
I was promoting thirty days to report back once the ordinance is established to establish the baseline tonnage and specific diversionary goals per year, within thirty days.
What I had proposed, I thought I was talking along the lines of your motion, was that we approve the grocery receipts for six months solely. And we instruct the mayor's office, sanitation, and public works to come back within six months with a tonnage plan. That accomplishes everything. That's the real compromise you want, Mr. Reyes.
Well, for the six months of grocery receipts program, I don't mind us approaching it that way, too. But I do want to keep the tonnage program within thirty days so that we can get the recycling goals set in place.
Are you going to have the ability, will they have the ability in thirty days to come up with a plan? I think that, you know, if they come up with it sooner, we can implement it. I want to limit, I want to limit the...
Hey, let the lobby sit down. Don't go tell the council.
Can I hold, everyone for a second? Mr. Burnson, Mr. Reyes, hold on for a second. We have the previous question before us, or we're redebating the matter if the council wants to, let's not, let's not get, what I hear clearly is Mr. Reyes has one intention. Mr. Burnson thought he was following that intention by adding a different twist to it. And so what's really before us are two different things now, what I'm picking up from the conversation. And I really believe that the more appropriate thing to do right now is to reopen debate if we want to clarify this stuff.
Let me try to clarify, Grant, through a point of order. I think they're too separate at it. Mr. Reyes's was a friendly amendment, which Mr. Holden accepted, which says that thirty days after this is adopted to bring back the information. We were told by the staff that they are going to be doing that study and I think the directions to do the, as close to possible, tonnage information so that either it gets shared in the grocery receipts bill or ultimately comes up with an alternate system, but to be done within six months after the thirty day report. But Mr., the separate motion of Mr. Burnson was to make it essentially a drop dead, only adopt this fee through the amendment on the environmental quality report for six months and then make us come back. So that is sort of the, as they say, it's a sort of a drop dead or it's a sunset ordinance that was sunset. We'd only collect fees for six months and six months either have to re-adopt the ordinance again or re-adopt it as amended by all these studies. So it really forces everybody to come to the table on that six month date. But in any case, the other thing, the other clarification I would make is to the city clerk that I think all the amendments were made on the environmental quality report, which were for the grocery receipts. So anything else is amended on that and I think that's one we would vote on, including Mr. Burnson's on a six month enactment date.
So the question is whether or not the chair of environmental quality accepts the friendly amendment, Mr. Burnson?
And basically, that says, come back within six months. They do it thirty days fine, Ed, but within six months, we don't just want to study, we want a plan. And I want the mayor's office to be responsible for that. I think they're, they want to take the leadership up and I think that's where it belongs. Okay, thank you, Mr. Burnson. Mr. Reyes, hold on. Mr. Garcetti.
A point of information for Mr. Reyes, a clarification, is the goal for the six months an actual tonnage goal itself or a goal for a system using tonnage?
We want both. We want to know what we're doing with our environment, we want to know how it impacts it, so for me...
The whole thing. But it does include a system, coming up with an idea for the system, which is based on its base. Okay, I just want to clarify that.
Ms. Gruel. Thank you.
I just, a point of information, with the friendly amendment, does it also include Ms. Misakowski's, which is an incentive, you know, incentives, which...
On the discount rate.
On the discount rate.
Proof of recycling material, yes.
Okay, that is included in the initial report or in the amendment?
What is it?
Just want to make sure everyone understood that.
All right, we have Mr. Holden as the chair of the committee, have three friendly amendments, Mr. Burnson, Misakowski, and Mr. Reyes, and I understand you accepted all three?
Right, and Mr. Reyes really is incorporated in, Mr. Burnson.
Right.
So it's all inclusive. Ms. Misakowski's motion does the same in terms of, you can study determine the effect of recycling program and how it's benefiting, one way or the other.
But the important difference...
The other difference, the important difference is this, you were saying that in six months, drop dead, the ordinance is adopted in six...
They put their feet to the fire to come up with a tonnage system rather than the grocery receipts.
No, you put your feet to the fire and then you light it up again when it goes down.
Well, that may be if we can come up with the right plan, but I have confidence that the mayor's office...
Mr. Burnson, as I was trying to explain, I understand what you're saying, your points will meet.
Point of order, the only other point of order, Mr. Holden, I can, the city attorney has just indicated that since the sunset clause of a six month proposal is not in the ordinance, if we were to do it today, it would have to go over because we don't have the ordinance. Now, we may want to ask if the intention is to vote on it with the sunset, that the matter come back on Friday with the sunset clause in it, if that's the amendment.
We can have a governing legislation or statement that's saying that, now we're sending the ordinance is in place, in six months you're going to come back and provide for us a tonnage base anyway. Adopt a... Why do you want to do that, Mr. Burnson? By the first, you've got to, the budget is going to go into effect, you need to...
It has to launch first to publish, right?
August first?
To publish.
Yeah, whatever.
Mr. Holden, are we ready to vote?
No, we're just, I'm just, to make sure that in six months, you're going to come back with the proposal that we voted on today and by tonnage. And you're going to inform us about what's, how effective it is and whether or not we should continue or discontinue and what we should adopt as a policy at that time. Okay.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, appears we're ready to vote on the matter, although two individuals hit their speaker buttons. Was that inadvertent, Mr. Garcetti and Ms. Misakowski? Mr. Clerk, open the rolls. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Thank you, colleagues. Now, colleagues, I want to...
So I mean that forty-three B is received and filed?
Yes, we'll consider forty-three to be received and filed. Colleagues, I have a second reading on item number forty-two, and I would want to make sure we deal with that before we lose quorum. Ms. Misakowski, Mr. Burnson, I have one speaker card on item forty-two, so I'm going to take that out of order. We're trying to lock in some interest rates for some refinancing. And item forty-two, you have, Ms., is not a second reading? It is a second reading. Ms. Hawkins, you have a minute to talk to us about item forty-two, which is a refinancing, and we need to pass this motion to lock in our interest rates. Ms. Hawkins?
Yes, sir.
Come on up and give us a minute worth on item forty-two.
Sir, that was a very long wait.
I understand.
Glad to be here for a moment. Okay, on item forty-two.
Go ahead, Ms. Hawkins.
Okay, okay, thank you. One moment, please. We're talking about the codes. Again, I say that we should still wait on our mayor comment before we give away any great money and deals, especially when it comes down to hiring police officers, firemen, accounting is not in the timing of what is happening in this recession of our government suffering in budget loss. Police should be thankful for their pay and work, very hard to protect and serve this country. Non-police being part of a gang, non-police being part of illegal, having iron in their bodies, wrongfully mistreating our youth by handling them roughly because of fake doctors whom have placed illegal iron, which police, you can tell if they do have iron, because they are stiff and it's not their body part, it is iron in their body which have been illegally placed in their body, which is against the law.
Thank you, Ms. Hawkins. I'm back.
Plus being miked on and to film movies.
And I understand, and I understand your viewpoint on all these issues. Colleagues, we have item forty-two before us, motion to approve. I understand it's a first reading. We need this vote today to expedite this. Open the roll. Mr. Clerk, close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Thank you, colleagues.
This matter will be continued for a second reading in as much as only eleven members present. It will be July third. Mr. President, item number thirty-two on the regular agenda is called Specialized, Mr. Holden.
Mr. Clerk and colleagues, at this time, I will, I'm reporting that we have lost We will continue forty-one A to Tuesday and all others. Everything will just roll over to Friday. Not you, Mr., it's not you, Mr. Labange. At this point, I would prefer doing a journey motions on Friday with the full quorum, otherwise we are adjourned. Thank you, colleagues.
Gracias, colegas.